All the meeting to order. Would you join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to all, and Ginny, would you take the role, please?
Collins.
Here.
Coyle.
Here.
Iger.
Lee.
Here.
Patrice.
Present.
Yusuf Abramson.
Here.
Owen.
Here.
Okay, we're going to start with 207's Best, and this month it is for Technology Leader or Innovator. We will start with Maine East. Okay.
Maine East High School is pleased to recognize Wolfgang Gustafson as one of 207's Best in the area of technology and innovation. My conversation with Wolf was inspiring in that he is a true product of the learning experience that we wish for all of our students. He came to Maine East eager to learn, to try new things, and find his passion, and that's exactly what he did. Wolf tried a wide variety of courses and appreciated the chance to experience new things. Wolf was always interested in both computers and cars, but he did not anticipate the extent to which CTE courses would influence his learning journey. When Wolf took robotics and computer programming, he learned that he's motivated by hands-on experiences. He loved programming the robots and experimenting with new codes. Then, when Wolf took auto fundamentals and auto service, he learned that he was most excited about pouring the skills he previously learned into cars. Car service quickly became his passion and his future career interest. Wolf loved the opportunity to learn through trial and error. He shared with me that he loves Mr. Atkins' classes because they're student-led. Mr. Atkins is there to support us, but we really get to try new things, and it's not a big deal if we screw up. We just learn from our mistakes. What's great about Wolf is that he continued to value diverse learning experiences. As a Lyceum student, Wolf managed a rigorous course load over his four years. He appreciated his Lyceum courses because they pushed his creativity and thinking out of the box. He shared that those special projects forced him to see his newfound innovation skills learned in autos and could translate those into creative service projects. Wolf's curious and committed learning style is appreciated by his teachers, of course. Mr. Atkins shared, "I've been fortunate to have Wolf as a student the last three years in autos and now in engineering and design capstone. Every day, Wolf comes to school with incredible positive energy, wanting to not only learn more himself, but also be a leader for others. Anytime Wolf observes me juggling too many things, he's quick to offer assistance, whether it be fixing a broken tool or assisting other students. Wolf thrives on accepting challenges, investigating possible solutions, while problem-solving the entire time. He's been working on fabricating a high-mileage vehicle in capstone, which is a project that requires innovation and a great deal of thinking outside of the box, all of which Wolf excels at." Mr. Raven shared, "I've had the chance to work with Wolf, both in and out of the classroom. In computer science, he has shown a knack for problem-solving and passion for learning and understanding why something works, rather than just rushing to a solution. He's a great teammate and someone that will not stop until the job is done. This is also seen outside of the classroom. I was fortunate enough to see Wolf's incredible work ethic and leadership as he and his Lyceum peers worked to clean neighborhoods and flooded basements in the Detroit area. Wolf jumped in with full feet and without hesitation when asked to perform intense manual labor to help those in need. Yes, I respect Wolf, the student, a great deal, but more, I respect Wolf, the young man, a great deal, as he has shown incredible kindness and care for others and is the kind of person you would want in your corner." Mr. Greenwald has also had a great experience with Wolf. He's a force of nature that brings energy and excitement to my classroom. Whether Wolf is building a robotics contraption or figuring out how to use a Linux exploit, it is enjoyable to watch him attack a challenge and grasp by concept. Mr. Hoo shared that it makes me so happy to see Wolf win this award. I worked with Wolf since his freshman year, and it's been gratifying to watch him grow and mature over time. He's an incredibly kind, inclusive, and clever student. Although I've mostly taught Wolf in more traditional academic settings, we've talked many times about his love of problem-solving, building, and cars. As a member of the Lyceum, Wolf came with us on a week-long service trip this summer. His dedication was admirable, and his work ethic was incredible, but one memory sticks out to me. While working for the Second Mile Center, a community center for disadvantaged children, Wolf saw a room of neglected bicycles and got to work with his skills and tools. He filled tires, fixed brakes, lubricated chains, making all but one of them functional again, making it possible for them to be distributed to children in the neighborhood. He took all that he had learned, both in his time in the CTE department and in his free time, and applied it to help others and make a difference. Wolf is committed to learning in the automotive program at SIU. He believes that the experiences he had at Maine East, especially in the CTE department, will give him an edge in his coursework. While his dream is to work his way up by working on high-performance luxury cars, he's also open to teaching. Wolf shared with me that he loves helping others and sharing his skills. When asked about possibly getting teacher certification, he said that he'd totally consider coming back to be the next Mr. Atkins. I can only hope that we would be that lucky. Wolf, do you want to share? I realize I spoiled a rumor about your future plans. Do you want to share with the group a little bit about what next year might look like for you?
Um, I mean, I'm just, I'm heading down to Carbondale for automotive technology. Um, and I mean, I've looked at their course sheet, and it's pretty incredible how accurate, and like, well, it fits me. This is exactly what I want to do. So, I'm super excited for that.
Great. Thanks, Wolf. We're super proud of you.
Okay. Uh, moving on to Maine West.
I'm really happy to present Daniel Roque. Daniel, can you come up here? Congratulations and thanks to Daniel Roque, who has contributed so much to Maine West High School as a technology leader and innovator. And as I talk with Dan and talk with teachers who were enthused to tell me about Dan, the word leader in the title of this award took on more and more emphasis. Insofar as a leader is defined as someone who makes deep and consistent commitments to helping others, Dan illustrates the core concept of technology, specifically physics and aviation, as his medium, more than it is his purpose. For Daniel, helping others is always the point. Even when describing his passion for flying, Daniel made it clear that what drives him is service. As a cadet in the Civil Air Patrol, Daniel gives up his scarce time to teach and learn about aerospace, engineering, the aviation industry, and the differences in technology that evolved from specific uses in commercial, military, and private aviation. He presented to other cadets on the differences between American and Chinese aviation industries. He volunteers to train and march and spend a week in something like basic training, accumulating some hours of flying time towards his license and learning how to fly and land a glider. One day, Daniel could potentially serve others in a search and rescue mission or in photography missions to assess storm damage. When I asked him what being a cadet means, he said, "It means being willing to learn and grow, make a commitment to the organization and its high standards, listen and learn from experienced officers, and serve others." Did I get that mostly right?
Yeah.
That definition is consistent with the way Daniel lives his life every day. He is all-in on learning, all-in on community. He tried fencing, fell in love with the community, and worked hard to become a varsity captain. He loves the balance between team commitment and self-reliance. He loves the community of his engineering and design class, specifically their work on the high-mileage vehicle competition. Working together with friends on teams has been the highlight of Daniel's experiences at Maine West. That's how he overcame the social anxiety he experienced as a freshman to become a prominent leader and friend in our senior class, in marching band where he is a section leader, in link crew, in fencing where he's a captain, in chess club, Mu Alpha Theta National Honor Society, Pi Sigma Phi Scholastic Bowl, Jazz Band, Pitt Orchestra, and Math Team. In his quiet and understated fashion, Daniel has become a person whom others follow. Daniel stands out as an exceptional math, science, and engineering student, but teachers and coaches across the school lauded his character and leadership above all else. Mr. Zapparopoulos highlighted Daniel's determination. If I could clone Dan, I would. I can say that in my five years of coaching the fencing team, I have never met a more determined person. Dan, like many others, had no experience fencing prior to Maine West. His strong willingness earned him a spot on the varsity saver squad his sophomore year, and now he is captain. Dan will be a force wherever he ends up. No challenge too big and no task too difficult. I could not think of a more deserving person to earn this leadership award. Thank you, Dan. Mrs. Avedeck praised Daniel's diverse contributions to English class. Daniel is interesting and interested, bringing his knowledge of history, military, and current events to our class discussions and his thoughtful writing. Few students demonstrate Daniel's degree of authentic curiosity and his insightful contributions to English to excel benefited all of his peers. Mrs. Young feels lucky to have had Daniel in class and to have him again as a link crew leader in her freshman advisory. Daniel was a student in my AP Physics 1 class last year and is currently a link crew leader in my freshman advisor. He's a dedicated and very successful student, as well as a natural leader. He shared his knowledge with confidence and humility. As a leader of younger students, he is kind and approachable. These are just a few of the many qualities that make Daniel an outstanding choice as recipient of this award. Congratulations, Daniel, and thank you for being such a positive force at Maine West. I think she was making a pun. Force. Mr. Mousha appreciates that Daniel expands our concept of who a leader is. Daniel's humble demeanor goes against the stereotype many have of what a leader looks like. However, he's a strong leader whom others choose to follow because of his consistent excellence. Mr. Sumida describes Daniel as a thinker and a leader. Daniel thinks through ideas thoroughly, meticulously parsing them for connections and inconsistencies until he internalizes them. That's an unusual quality in a person, let alone a student, and it serves Daniel well. He is also an effortless leader, helping guide those on his team by providing support and by listening to the needs of others. Mr. Ruder knows nothing about Daniel's technical skills, but what he shares about Dan as a person is pretty telling. The funny thing about Dan Roque getting the award for Tech Innovator and Leader is that I have known him as an MVP on Maine West Scholastic Bowl team in the ti- as I have known him. As an MVP on Maine West Scholastic Bowl team, he has proven himself as the history genius. No one knows more history than Dan Roque. Just goes to show why, when I had Dan in English AP Language last year, all the other kids looked up to him with envy. Whether we are talking about tech innovations, historical facts, or writing, Dan has multiple talents, and so he is very deserving of this recognition, and I am excited to see where the future takes him. We're all excited to see where the future takes you, Daniel. We hope you will always remember how grateful we've been to have you for four years.
Can you introduce who's here with you tonight?
Uh, my mom, Andrea Roque, and my dad, Dan Roque. I plan to go to Colorado School of Mines and study aerospace engineering, and maybe do ROTC and join the Air Force. Thank you.
Before we move on, I do want to say, Wolf, I think you have someone who came here. Would you like to introduce who came, who is with you tonight?
Um, my mom, Janessa, is here, and my dad, Jason, is also here.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to Maine South. Dr. Collins.
Sure. Tonight, we are proud to recognize Almas, Alma's Ms. Queenal, for 207's Best for Technology and Innovation. And when Alma's and I were talking in my office, and she was describing all the things that she's done, she eventually got to a story about her father that I want to share just in a second here, which was really touching. As, as somebody in our school who walks through the halls of a building that was just redesigned, tonight's a perfect award with everything that you've been doing. Alma's is really, really into engineering, and her favorite class right now is Project Lead the Way Civil Engineering, where she's designing a project for Habitat for Humanity. But with all the things happening at the school, she's taken things like internship, making floor plans for apartment buildings. She's also worked at architecture firms. Over the summer, she attended the UC Berkeley Two Week Symposium on Engineering Programs with the National Student Leadership Conference. She learned mechanical engineering, soldering, and projects like where they fit golf balls into pools. Currently, she's designing a school for the future. It's too bad more than five years ago. That innovates technology and brings it into the school setting. Freshman year, she took CAD, and that really sparked a flame with her for technology and design. Which brings me to the point I made earlier when we were talking, and I said, like, what about design and engineering, like, really got you excited? And she mentioned having conversations with her father, who is a licensed architect, and talking about designs and floor plans and everything that goes into them, and then putting those ideas on paper and drawing them out. So that was just a really, really sweet story to hear how that connection's been made. She's also a Hawk Pride leader. She's in Spanish NHS Key Club, Secretary of Autos Club, and Spanish Club. Alma's counselor, Megan Wood, says Alma's is a standout student who has taken advantage of countless elective and career opportunities during her high school career. She possesses a genuine love for learning, and this has been apparent by her enthusiasm in her classes and her desire to gain firsthand experience into the areas that she is most passionate about. She is kind, curious, and goal-oriented, and working with her has been a true privilege. Her sports and literature teacher, Mr. Marsakano, says Alma's chose to take sports and literature as an elective course since her AP English class already fulfilled the graduation requirements. She exudes a quiet confidence in the classroom. Her valuable contributions to class discussions typically occurred after a few other students had contributed ideas. This demonstrates not only the respect she has for her peers and their ideas, but also the fact that she values and practices listening to others. She is an intelligent student with a genuine personality who positively impacts any classroom environment she's in. Doug Walter, Alma's AP Environmental Science teacher, says Alma's has been a standout student in AP Environmental Science this year. Alma's exemplifies every single one of the Hawk Pride letters: purposeful, resilient, inclusive, dependable, and engaged, and is thus an exemplary learner and leader in class. Alma's can always be counted on to do a thorough job and see it to its completion. Alma's CAD teacher, personal autos and Project Lead the Way Civil Engineering and Architecture Accelerated Teacher, Mr. Kraus, says Alma's has been an outstanding student in and outside of the classroom over the four years I have known her. She offers insightful comments and asks questions that the entire class can benefit from. I also know she has been involved with an internship outside of Maine South CTE courses. Alma's also served as an elected officer in the Auto Club, where she brought a fresh perspective to our club. Her AP Literature and Composition Teacher, Ms. Braverman, says accomplished yet modest, Alma's is more than deserving of this award. In getting to know her this year, I am impressed by Alma's insights, confidence, and consistency. She is truly one of 207's Best. And finally, Joanna Abend, Alma's AP in Language and Composition Teacher, says Alma's is a hard-working student, a creative thinker, and a mature young woman. I was so glad to have her in the AP Language and Composition class, as well as a friendly, respectful student from the very first day of school. Congratulations, Alma's. So Alma's, why don't you tell us what you are interested in doing next year?
Um, I plan on going to Illinois Institute of Technology to study architecture next year.
That's awesome. And then who is here with you tonight?
Um, I have my mom, my dad, um, and then my brother right there.
Congratulations. Well, you can come back and do the next referendum project.
Well, congratulations to Wolf, Daniel, and Alma's and your proud parents. Thank you for all that you've been doing, and best of luck in the future. This is your chance to go ahead and have photos taken with your principals and your family, and you're welcome to come back to the meeting, but we fully understand if you're not going to be there. Okay. Uh, moving on to public comments. I have two here. Before you step up to the podium to speak, please note that we allow three minutes for public comment. We're happy to have you here. Karen Heckman. Welcome.
Thank you. Shall I hold on this line?
Oh, yeah. Does it work?
My name is Karen Heckman. I live at 905 Center in Des Plaines. My son went to Maine West and got an education which certainly has prepared him for what he's doing now. I am here representing the American Association of University Women, the Northwest Suburban Branch. We have membership districts in Des Plaines, Park Ridge, and Mount Prospect. And I just wanted to share with you a couple of our, our values for public education. We obviously believe in the education of women and the advancement of women in participation in society, but there are two other things which we thoroughly support and one which we oppose. We support a curriculum that fosters learning truthful and accurate history of all races and ethnicities. We also believe in the absolute separation of church and state in public education. And the one thing that we oppose is book banning. And I want to thank you for your attention, and also I want to thank you very much for all of your efforts in seizing the moment five years ago to expand and improve the physical plan of all three schools and the learning environments for the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Monica Langdon. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Monica Langdon, and I retired from teaching chemistry at Maine South in 2020. I'm here with no agenda or vested interest. I just really care about this district. It's where I gave my life's work. I loved it so much that I continue to serve here. I had a unique, uh, unique perspective when I taught here because I taught the top accelerated students, as well as the lowest level of students that we call transitional. That class was called EMC. When I would tell people that I worked in District 207, they would be impressed because of District 207's reputation of producing the highest caliber of students. However, District 207, uh, the rigor of District 207 has really gone downhill. To me, it seemed to start with implementation of retakes, learning change to gaming the system, and point-getting. Homework doesn't count for credit, so why do it? I've seen so many changes when I come to South, especially in mapability, which is essential for science. The initiative that I'm having the hardest time understanding is the elimination of tracking. I can tell you for certain that our EMC students really understood the topics we covered, and we created opportunities for them to move up. Many did. My last-year teaching was the last year for EMC. Those students now take Chemistry 102. The theory is that these former EMC students will rise to the level of Chem 102. However, the reality is that Chem 102 has lowered the bar to accommodate these students. Their curriculum even uses many of the EMC materials. My other issue is the elimination of final exams. Are finals stressful? Absolutely. However, teachers don't just review content. They teach students how to prepare for a final. Instead of relieving stress, we are producing delayed anxiety. They don't have the skills and strategies they need when mistakes are higher. This hurts them in the end because they have not developed the grit needed to do these final exams. Finally, there has been such a loss of minutes that students actually spend in class, coupled with only seeing students every other day. How could they not be learning less? When I speak to colleagues, they tell me the rationale for all these changes is equity. Is the only way minority students can be successful is by lowering the bar? This seems insulting. Again, my only reason for speaking tonight is the love I have for students of this district. Your greatest resource are the teenagers, and they are more capable than you are giving them credit for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Moving on to update from the superintendent.
You might want to stay, Monica. You might want to stay.
No, you don't have to stay. Okay, Ken.
So, um, I want to speak directly about detracking, and I want to speak to it with facts. Detracking's been around in this country for years and years and years and years and years. There's an axiomatic truth relative to detracking. When we say that some students are not capable of moving past transition courses, for example, or other courses, we relegate them to a far, far less curriculum than if we opened the gates for them. And what it does is it perpetuates the inequities that exist in society. So detracking, rather than being a good, being good for students, it actually does just the opposite. So since we've detracked, let's talk about the facts. Since 2016, our students of color have gone from 20.6% of our most rigorous courses to 42.3% of our most rigorous courses, just since 2016. Since 2012, the growth of our Black students in our most rigorous courses, and again, our, the capstone being our dual-credited AP courses, our Black student growth is 843%. Our Hispanic students is 424%. At the same time, our traditionally overrepresented students, our white students and our Asian students have grown 129%, 122% respectively. There's this belief in this conversation that this is a zero-sum game, that if we do something to include traditionally excluded students, and that's the accurate term, traditionally excluded students, when we do something to include them, we somehow watered down, lowered the bar, hurt other kids. The record says just the opposite, that actually detracking helps rise the tide for every single student, and it includes traditionally underserved students by giving them access to our most rigorous curriculum. Our results speak for themselves. In fact, this year, this past year, coming off a pandemic, for the first time in district history, our students took and successfully passed 7,420 college courses. A few years ago, that number was 2,000, and it was overrepresented by our Asian and white students. So this notion that we have lowered the bar, that we've watered down, that we're hurting students, the facts say just the opposite. So I just want to make sure that the record's clear about that. Okay. Moving on to our board member, Mr. Lee. I want to congratulate Mr. Lee for the wonderful visit that we had a couple weeks ago from our sister school, from South Korea Dagewan High School. Our sister school students were here. We also did another MOU with, I'm going to try to pronounce this, so you correct me, Dongmyeong High School from Korea. We've done an MOU with them. I want to thank Ben and Melissa for hosting the students at Maine East and Maine South High School. It was a really, really well-received visit. I think the students were incredibly impressed by just the physical size of our schools. From a cultural perspective, seeing all of the athletic facilities, for example, something that doesn't exist in South Korea. And then I think they also got an American lunch. Did everybody make it back to Korea? Okay.
It should be.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure about that. So, anyway, but thank you so much, Ginny, for helping arrange that.
Thank you.
And, and Ben and Melissa, thank you for accommodating the students at East and South.
Thank you, Ken. Updates from board members? Ginny, do you want to start?
Yes, related to. First of all, as Dr. Ken says, the students has safely went back home. It was their first time visiting the United States ever. It took them almost 48 hours from Seoul, Korea to, to coming to Chicago because they had to stop over in California to save some flight costs because flight cost is quite expensive. So they came to, from Seoul to LA, and then they waited for about four, five hours, and then took the American airline from LA to Chicago. So it took almost 40-some-odd hours from, departed from home. So, um, they were able to stay about five days in Chicago, and they were able to visit our two wonderful school. And they sent the emails saying, um, thank for the, our superintendent for the hosting service and including two wonderful school. So we especially would like to thank, uh, from the Maine East, from Principal Pye Koo, and also Assistant Associate Principal, Mr. Romeo Taylor, and also Music Director, Kate Lee, for spending and hosting and welcoming and warm, warm welcoming. And also from the Maine South, Dr. Ben Collins, and also Associate Principal for Human Resource, I believe, Iris Smith, for Instructional and Operations, and many others. So they had a delightful experience, educational, culturally, international experience for the students, and greatly appreciate for two wonderful high schools. Especially, they enjoyed it from the school tour. Again, that was their first time attending an American high school, meeting with the peers, especially for the boys' school, meeting with the very diverse male and female students. Was quite fascinated by them, I guess. So they enjoyed it as well. Because at the Maine South, uh, when they were going, they're done with the visiting and so on, and they're off back to their afternoon events, and it was at the, passing through the cafeteria, and happened to be all the students were there, and they met them, and they cheered them, and it was a very heartfelt experience. The kids were all taking pictures and, you know, and they took a lot of pictures. But, uh, true- all taking pictures, and, you know, and they took a lot of pictures. But truly, I think the Maine Township is doing a fantastic job regarding the global educational international program networking this opportunity, really getting to know each other. And for the students, when they return, they respectfully understand how the, our, one of the best top Maine Township districts programs, services, all the teachers, the staff, the school itself with the renovation. Because in Korea, even though President Obama recognized how the great educational system Korea has and a lot of things, but actually personally, I think we have the, one of the best educational system throughout. So we are grateful for this hosting as such. The other one, and also at the time, our Dean Patrice, the board member, was able to take his time out and stop by and meet with the students and the teachers and say hello, and his son meeting with the students too. So they had a wonderful time. So thank you to Member Dean on that. And then the other one regarding the breakfast with the boards. I know it's been a while due to the COVID, but after we convened on such opportunity, I and Sheila, we went to Main West and Main South. And truly, we had a very nice experience with the meeting with the teachers and staffs too. And I was very impressed with the members of the teachers and staff, their commitment. Most of them, we met and talked to them, were like 20, 25, 30 years even. Their commitment and sacrifice as a teacher and staff for the educational industry is really fascinating. And because of them, then we are in a great hands such. And throughout the conversation, I have experienced a couple that I thought it will be worthwhile to share briefly, and something that as a school leader can certainly kind of think about it and see how we can able to assist, help, participate, and support. One was the-
You know, before you get too far along on that, let me make a comment, just because it might answer some of what you're saying, if I could. I did want to say on behalf of all the board, I think it's fair to say, we really appreciated the opportunity. I wanted to thank Julia and all the teachers for putting those breakfasts with the board together. There were some issues that came out in questions, and we're actually going to go over some of those at the Education Committee meeting. So you might want to attend, and before you, you know, maybe we can talk about them at the Education Committee meeting before getting into them here.
I see. I see. Okay.
Okay.
The word were taken.
Yeah.
Sure.
Anybody else have any comments, or?
I just want to echo Jen's comments about the teachers in general. I feel we are so lucky to have the teachers that we have here. They're so committed, and they care so much about what they're doing. That was so evident in our, in our meetings with them, and I just, I want to say thank you, whoever out there. I mean, really, what a huge-
So you can bring it back. Thank you.
I just want to add, I went, I only had the opportunity to go to Main East. I hope we do this every year. I think COVID, I know there was a, we had to stop, and I thought it was terrific. I thought the meeting of the teachers was great. Again, agree, they're so committed to making the educational experience for the students better. I mean, that was what their, their aim. Just fantastic staff. I do look forward to discussing the issues at the Education-
Yeah, there were definitely some questions that board members had, and so I thought we'll cover them. And the best place, I think, to do that is more in the Education Committee, where we can really focus, and those are open meetings, so anyone is welcome to attend. So I think our Education Committee meeting is set for the 17th.
Okay.
Okay? If for some reason you can't be at that, you know, obviously, we can follow up. Okay? Anyone else? Okay. Let's move on to the Finance Committee update. Linda?
Sure. So Finance Committee meeting was held on January 23rd. Members present were myself, Dean Patrice, and Sheila Youssef Abramson. Meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM, and there were no public comments. The first item that we discussed was new, possible new staff for 2024 school year. Assistant Superintendent for Business Mary Kalu, the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources George Dagras, and Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Innovation Sean Mesmer ran through the need for new staff for that 23-24 school year. The Director of MTSS and Student Supports will move from a 10-month position to a 12-month position as the need for work throughout the summer has increased. The Director of Multilingual Learning is a new position and is necessary for our growing population of students needing services across our three schools. Assistant Superintendent for Student Family Services Katie DeSanza is collecting data on the district's need for mental health providers. Follow-up information will be sent, or was sent, I don't know if it will be sent, Friday night. Our school's athletic trainers are currently working 10 months. Due to the shortage of coverage for summer camps and the lack of available trainers for contracted services, the district recommends moving the trainers to 12-month positions. The district is also looking into the possibility of hiring assistant athletic trainers, additional teachers, teaching assistant, teacher assistants, custodians, and building MTSS coordinators. And we're going to be updated after the annual staffing meeting is held. We also discussed the mid-year budget update. The district is proposed, is projected to increase the budget surplus to $14,461,112. And this is mostly due to the tremendous and unexpected increase in corporate personal property replacement taxes, as well as the flow of COVID relief funds. The district also realized savings of 800, excuse me, $783,000 with our December Premium Holiday, unspent contingencies of $510,000, and special education outplacement tuition of $800,000, and other accounts that will not be fully spent added to the surplus. Since this overflow of revenue is not permanent, we thought that a transfer of $8 million from the Education Fund to the Capital Projects Fund was the wisest course and is recommended. We also, we also discussed the Inspect contract, and that's a roofing design and maintenance consulting company specializing in water mitigation. The contract was attorney-approved, and the district has been pleased with their work over the last year. We also discussed, we had a lot to discuss, the investment volatility report. That report compares the carrying market value of our investment portfolio based on the rise and fall of interest rates. Our current portfolio has a value of $154,427-
$154 million.
$154 million, $427,000, and a market value of $146,740,445. If this year were the year-end, the district would post a negative adjustment of $7 million. However, we hold our investments to maturity. The final item that we discussed was residency policy 7.60. There's a minor language change made to that policy, and tonight, we're going to be asked to waive the first reading and approve at this meeting. There is no other business, and the meeting was adjourned at 5:59 PM.
Thank you.
Drink of water.
You do.
Well, very efficient.
Okay, moving on to Buildings and Grounds and Construction Update.
The meeting of the Buildings and Grounds Committee was held on January 23rd, 2023. Members present were Linda Coyle and Jen Lee, and the meeting was called to order at 5:59 PM. There were no public comments. Assistant Superintendent for Business Ms. Mary Kalu updated the committee on the construction progress. The pool at Main East is in full swing construction and is scheduled to be completed and turned over in March or early April. Main South and Main West continue to work on punch list items. There being no further business. Member Coyle adjourned the Buildings and Grounds Committee at 6:02
Anything to add? Okay. All right, Mary, moving on to, thank you, Teri, thank you very much. Moving on to monthly status of finances.
This month, we have three. The first is the regular December financial statement. If you take a look at revenues, we're happy to start to see the collection of taxes roll in, so you'll see that revenue line continue to increase as a percentage of prior years. When you look at the fund-by-fund expenditures, the only one that kind of jumps out as a fund for us to watch is the Transportation Fund. It's kind of inaccurate to compare it to the last two years because we had limited transportation in those years, but we're starting to see an increase in the cost and frequency of transportation, so that's a fund that we're going to watch closely. I'll do all three reports, and then I'll take any questions. The second, as Member Coyle presented, was the Investment Volatility Report. This is a quarterly report that we do that just really gives you a summary of the investment portfolio and kind of tracks what that market-to-value adjustment would be had it been the end of the fiscal year. Again, that adjustment is only made once during the audit. It either increases or decreases the value of our portfolio based on the value at that day, regardless of whether or not we sell those investments on that day or hold them to maturity, which is what we do. The final report is the Second Quarter Budget Update. As Member Coyle discussed, the real change in the budget has to do with corporate personal property replacement tax and the astonishing corporate profits of the state of Illinois is seeing. This line is three times as high as we traditionally have seen it in the last 15 years, which is why we know that it is not projected to stay at this level, and which makes sense then for us to take that one-time money and put it towards one-time expenditures and capital projects as we're going to come up with the next five-year facilities plan. You know, doors and hardware replacement will be high on the list, as well as exterior beautification. The Second Quarter Budget Update walks you through in detail the changes in not only the revenue, but expenditure by major area. So I will entertain any questions that anybody has on any of those reports.
Any questions, anyone? All right, thank you very much.
I do have one. The five-year capital plan, that's what we talked about before, about that's the non-referendum.
Correct.
Things like fix in the steps and-
Correct. It's, we're going to do it in conjunction with the 10-year life safety. Every 10 years, the district has to by law go through what's called a life safety survey, where the architects have to walk through every square footage of the building. So doing it in conjunction with that, which will start next September, we see a huge cost savings in terms of the architectural fees on that because they have to go through and take a look at anything for that 10-year life safety survey.
You said next, next September?
Next September. So I would anticipate we have a full-scale report probably by this time next year.
Oh, good. Thanks, Mary.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay. Instructional Services. No report, okay. Monthly update of FOIA requests.
For this month, they've either been processed or they're processing.
Okay. Thank you. Could I have a motion on the Consent Agenda, Items 7A through, sorry, through E?
So moved.
Second.
Jenny, would you take the role?
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Okay. Could I have a motion on Item 8A, which is the Policy on Residency? Before we do that, I just want to suggest that we not waive the first reading. I had a conversation with Ken. I'm not sure if there's a reason that we really need to do that, fine, but if we don't need to, if we don't need to, I'd rather not.
Yeah, we don't need to waive.
Okay.
So we won't take action on that?
We will not.
How many were the meeting that you discussed it the other day? Where that was discussed?
Just five.
Five, yeah, so five, five are privy to at least some of the discussion. So we can, we can catch up that and maybe do it in an upcoming meeting.
It's not a big change. It's just, I just would rather not waive the reading. Okay. Can I have a motion on Item 9A? Mary?
As discussed at the Finance Committee report, this is a master agreement with a company called Inspect. Inspect is a design consultant that specializes in building envelope. We use them specifically for roofing. So this master agreement provides a sliding scale on projects. So similar to our Architector-Master Agreement, when we have a project that we're going to design, we look at the sliding scale, determine the complexity and the size of the project, and this agreement covers the fees as well as the scope of services. This is the standard AIA contract that we have used with our architectural firms. It has been negotiated, and all of the supplemental conditions have been approved by France, like our legal firm. So this is pretty standard, but it is a new company we're entering into a master agreement with.
Have we had agreements like this in the past with other, for the roofing?
No. So how Inspect started is, a couple of years ago, we went through White, our existing architects for this, and we ran into some specialized problems for some of the roofs, and they referred us to Inspect. So then we started to use Inspect on a limited scale, have found that we like their designs. Their designs are extensive and competent. I don't know how else you disguise a roof design. So White kind of recommended that we use them as well. So this is where we're pulling away from our traditional architect and putting what really is an expert in that area.
I'm sorry, how long is it for?
It's a ma- a master agreement exists until-
Until we decide to-
You decide not to want them anymore. There's termination provisions, but it just, this takes the place of us having to bring an individual agreement year after year and negotiate. Kind of sets the overall price. The benefit of that is that because that price is set in the master agreement, you're not really subject to annual increases. So over the long run, the master agreement provides a smaller percentage of the fee.
Any questions on this? Okay. Jenny, would you take the role? Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Could I have a motion on Item 9V? This is a consulting services agreement with Mando Consulting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, this is, we are working with a consultant to bring more structure to our evaluation procedure, the board's evaluation procedure of the superintendent position. So this is just a small contract with them. Okay. Any questions? All right, would you take the role? Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Okay, could I have a motion on Item 10, Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Park School?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so Park School is one of the schools that we use to help support students with IEPs whose needs are not able to be met here with, given one of our serving schools in the district. The, there is no change to the actual agreement. It's just to the rate for this year, which is an increase of $18.24 per day. So I know it sounds odd that we're bringing it this late in the year, but this is not unusual for private and public day schools to not have their rate set till much later into the school year. So then they just backfill us for the $18.24. I'll entertain any questions that you might have about the initiative.
Any questions?
Changes to the actual rate.
Just the dub. Okay. Any questions? Okay. Jenny, would you take the role? Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Have a motion on Item 11, Intergovernmental Agreement with NSERV.
So moved.
Second. Okay.
So NSERV is our EFE, or what's known as an Education for Employment Region, or Region 25. It's an consortium that exists of five school districts. There have been changes to state law, which require us to make adjustments to the intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement we have, and we are the fiscal agent here in District 207 of NSERV. So you see that name often throughout the year. So I'll entertain- So I'll entertain any questions you might have, but this is, all the updates to the agreement are due to change in state law.
Any questions on this? Okay. Jenny, would you take the role? Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen? Aye. Could I have a motion on Items 12A and B together?
So moved.
Second. Okay, these are facility waivers at Main West. So, may I?
Sure. We have a great relationship with the Displanes Park District and they are offering some programs that we want to support because eventually those will, those kids could participate in our programs at the high school. So gymnastics and palms, we support them by letting them use our space.
Okay. Any questions?
Just continuing what to say, it's very important to build a strong relationship with the community park districts throughout. So it's always great to see this.
Okay. Anything else? All right, would you take the role? Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Owen? Aye. Could I have a motion on Item 13, New Club Proposal at Main South?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Ben?
Yeah, it's just a club for female identifying students. Come together and talk about business opportunities, explore a lot of things that would be in careers and better marry them together after school.
Okay. Any questions?
Overall, how is our club activities after pandemic per se? Now we became fresh and lively, excited again. Still.
We're back.
Jenny? Patrice?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen? Aye. Okay. Item 14 is just calendar items. If you have anything to add, let us know on there. Are there any other communications or public comments? All right. If not, could I have a motion to go into closed session for purposes of student personnel, review of closed session minutes, appointment, employment, compensation, performance, discipline or dismissal of specific employees and collective negotiating matters?
So moved.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Owen? Aye. Okay. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Second. Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Owen? Aye. Could I have a motion on Item 18, A through G? Is it, is it, A through G?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen? Aye. Could I have a motion on Item 20, approval of closed session minutes for January 9th, 2023?
So moved. Second.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen? Aye. Could I have a motion on Item 21A?
I move that, do you want me to read it? Yes. I move that the Board of Education approves the final adjudication for employee number 020623-1.
Need a second? Thank you.